All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the May 5th, 2025 meeting of the Plymouth School Committee to order. For who, and please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we have a special evening tonight. We have a few items for public comment. Oh wait, actually, before I get to that, I will do our land acknowledgement. Ms. Jackson?
We acknowledge that we are meeting on the unceded ancestral homeland of indigenous people whose enduring presence we humbly recognize. We honor the Wampanoag people as the original stewards of the Herring, and the Herring Pond Wampanoag as a surviving tribe indigenous to these lands. In our commitment to lifelong learning, we acknowledge historical injustices to the native peoples of this land and vow to educate ourselves, our community, and our students on the first peoples and the hardships they endured. We offer this as a small but essential step towards building a culture of respect, truth, and accountability.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. All right, now into public comment. So first up, we have, we are honored to have our state representative, Ms. Michelle Badger. Would like to say a few words.
Thanks for having me. This is such a different site, a different way to view this crowd, so thank you for having me. It's an honor to be back here and to be able to recognize Dr. Sorenson in the time that you've given to our community, both, you know, personally, on the personal side, being always able to ask you a question, and you, having that institutional knowledge was really invaluable. And then, obviously, for our community to be able to take us from, you know, a regional school district to our town of Plymouth and through all of the ups and downs and really kind of have a hand in the change and the evolution that has been in the Plymouth Public Schools. You know, it's a different place than when I went. It, you know, you've really helped to uplift our community. So I am proud to be here to present a citation to you, and it reads, "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the House of Representatives, be hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincerest congratulations to Dr. James Sorenson in recognition of over thirty years of dedication, dedicated service on the Plymouth School Committee, demonstrating a deep commitment to equity and access that leaves a lasting impact on generations of students. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hopes for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors given this fifth day of May, 2025, at the State House, Boston, Massachusetts, signed by our Speaker of the House, Ronald Mariano, myself, and Representative Kathleen LaNatra." So, thank you.
Let's get a phone.
Watch the cords.
Yeah, they could, yeah.
Yeah?
Do you all want to get up for the photo?
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, tell them not to go anywhere, all right? Mr. Pizano, do you want me to, do you want me to get the, oh. Don't go anywhere, please.
All right, people, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make people get their steps in, because not to be out done, we'd like, the Plymouth Public Schools and the school committee would like to recognize Dr. Sorenson as well. So I have a wonderful plaque here, made here in the district. So it reads, "In recognition of Dr. James Sorenson for his exceptional service to the Plymouth Public Schools and the community. Dr. James Sorenson dedicated thirty-five years of service to the Plymouth School Committee, including many years as chair. His visionary leadership and steadfast commitment have significantly contributed to the educational growth and well-being of our students. In honor of his lasting impact, we extend our heartfelt thanks and recognition to Dr. Sorenson, presented May 5th, 2025, Plymouth Public Schools." Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, thank you, Reed, thank you.
So I think we need another picture with you holding that.
Is that a yes?
Yes.
Go get a phone.
Let's go.
All of us?
Thank you, everybody. It's not very often we have someone retire, so it's worth taking the extra time. All right, next we have Dr. Lisa White and General Vane to present on some, and acknowledge the Quanis Club. So come and join us.
If you want, if you want to do the introductions.
Thank you for having us. So we're very excited to, we always love being able to appreciate our community members and organizations that are so important to the success of our school system. And for the second year in a row, we had a One District, One Author program with all of the elementary schools in Plymouth, which is nice to have something with all of the schools. And we had author Kate Messner, who is a very prolific children's book author. She's written picture books, she's written novels, she's written nonfiction books, she's written series. You might know her History Smashers or Ranger in Time series. She's really a wonderful author, and we had the opportunity to bring her virtually to, into all of our schools and also to purchase books and do a lot of activities for all of our students to bring her into the world, bring them into the world of an author. And so we wanted to thank two organizations that were integral to allowing us to bring this to the district. The Quanis Club and the Plymouth Ed Foundation. And do you want to add anything on your end? We have Kathy Bavini here, and John Machado and company, so he can, he can, he can introduce his other, his other members as well, but I don't know if you wanted to add.
Just expressing our tremendous thanks for making this opportunity available, having the students, when they were virtually asking questions with Kate Messner, we weren't really sure how the virtual format, we had a girl who was fully dressed as one of the characters from one of her books, and we had another student who was in a full suit, and we said, "Oh, are you dressed up as someone?" And he's like, "No, I wanted to be wearing my best to meet Kate Messner." So it was just really incredible to see those connections and they're across the board. So whether you're in kindergarten at Cold Spring, or whether you're at fifth grade at Nathaniel Morton, all of the students across the district got to interact and engage with her, and all of the students have text sets of all of her really rich stories, regardless of where they are. So we're just profoundly appreciative for that opportunity for the students to engage with her, but then also to have those materials henceforth, moving forward. So thank you so much to P E F and Quanis for making that possible.
Call them up? Take your time.
Do we want to do like Quanis first and then?
Yes, so we can do, we'll do, it doesn't matter what order, we'll do, we'll do Ed Foundation first, maybe. So we have a commemorative frame with pictures from the event and a thank you, and then also giving them one book out of the many that we purchased, just as a way of thanking them and also having it in full display for their members to see, so.
Three of you, three.
We can do one at the end.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, um, I don't probably need a microphone, but I'm, I'm John Machado, I'm the Vice President of Quanis, and this is Jeff, and this is Steve Kenke, Jeff Viella, and then Joey Viella, Chris Raymond, Lee Kenke, Jenny Machado, and Linda Flattery. All of us had kids, well, most, all except two people in our club that had kids that went to Plymouth Public Schools and now some of us have grandchildren that are already in the Plymouth Public Schools, some of them as a little bit too young. So this is something that Steve came up with this idea last year to start helping, and it's something we continue to plan to do every year, because the mission of Quanis is to support the children of the community. So everything we do is for the, always for the children of the community. So that's about it.
Reading is it? Learn to read.
Yes.
Yeah, Louise, do you want to, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Ready? There we go. Thank you.
All right, that was wonderful. Thank you, everybody. Really appreciate that. All right, so we don't have our student representatives today, and I'm sure they're, as seniors, very busy with end-of-year activities and middle of A P exams and everything else that they have to do in their last three weeks of school, so we will excuse them for tonight. That means we will move on to, we have two elementary school improvement plans for review tonight. First up, we have Cold Spring Elementary. So call Ms. Stephanie Van Winkle.
Hello.
Welcome for the first time.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Dr. Sorenson, for your hard work and dedication to the district, and thank you all of the members for always supporting Cold Spring Elementary School and myself through my first year as the principal. I'm not big on talking in public, but I'll do the best I can.
If you click the right button, it should progress.
The right one?
Yeah, no.
Why would that work the first time I'm here?
Again, this is an initiation. Part of the process, no. Mr. Gravio can probably progress it from on her end. Is it not moving?
So it's one slide. Nice job.
Thank you. You're making me feel so comfortable.
Very comprehensive.
I tell you, neon technology, we don't get along so well. So first I would like to say thank you to all of our school council members. They were so helpful in helping me through the first process, going through this for the first time. Andrea O'Brien, Patrick Higgins, and Barbara Pagnati, Amanda Pinto, and Louise Pizano, and then obviously me. And then, oh, thank you. Cold Spring is really unique in the fact that our demographic, it makes us unique and very special. A hundred and nine of our students are economically disadvantaged. At this time, we have seven different languages in the building, and then we have thirty-nine of our special education students. So we are a very diverse group, and that's one of the reasons I enjoy working there. We offer many enrichment opportunities after school, and these are just a few of them. All of our clubs are led by teachers, our school counselors, and/or paraprofessionals, and each club runs for ten to sixteen weeks. Cold Spring Elementary is a whole school Title I school, which allows us to improve the entire school's academic program and achievement for all of our students, not just a select few or specific students. We have at least forty percent of our students are low-income. We do the Big Brother Big Sister program where the Bigs will come into our school, and they have lunch and recess with our students once a week, which has been amazing for our kids. The Y does a mentoring program once a week at the end of school for our older kids. Gauz and old counseling is really important because a lot of our students do have some mental health issues or challenges. So it's been nice to have them in the building because a lot of our families are unable to get them to out-of-school counseling because they don't have cars or they're, or they're working. So this is an opportunity for get, for them to get the counseling that they need. Last year, we started the Positive PINS Peer Award, where our staff and teachers nominate students for going above and beyond the expectations of the school and being a really good friend. They win a free game of bowling, and they can win the Positive Peer Award several times. As whenever a teacher's catching them doing something above and beyond. And then our PBS program is the Cub Coins. Students oin, oin, students earn coins for, when they're doing expected behavior in the building or they're using really good manners, they can earn a coin to put into their fishbowl in the classroom. And once they fill that fishbowl, the whole class earns an award and then eventually gets dumped into a whole school award system. So we did a lot of really new things, and I think they're pretty exciting in the building. This is the first year that we had an open house that was specifically for our Portuguese-speaking families. We presented open house in English with my interpreter that we have in the building. We do a morning mantra, which I'll talk more about in a couple slides. We do a monthly whole school meeting, the first Monday of every month. We do a little social-emotional lesson and then, or talk about the expectations in the building. We present our awesome attendance certificates. We do our Staff Member of the Month. We do our Positive Peer Awards, and we celebrate the birthdays of the month, all together as a whole community. This year, we invited the Council of Active Living to volunteer in our classrooms, which has been super successful for the volunteers as well as for our students. That generational bonding has been amazing for a lot of our students that don't have grandparents around. We have a ninety-year-old that comes into one of our kindergarten classrooms, and they absolutely adore her. We decided to celebrate all the different traditions and holidays throughout the building this year because we have so many different cultures in our building. We recognized and celebrated Appreciation Days, Arts and Education Week, the Fire Prevention. We had the Plymouth Fire Department come with their fire truck and let off their hoses, and the kids thought that was great. School psychologist appreciation. We did a safety and well-being presentation in Portuguese to address the ICE and deportation fears of our families. Our attendance really went down when the deportation talk began. Our families were very much afraid to send their kids to school. So we did a presentation that told them that they were safe, this is a really safe place for them, that we weren't ever going to report to ICE, and we also provided them with resources in case something happened that they would be able to know who to reach out to. Our core values, there are a lot, but the main thing that we were, are really trying to strive for is to create a welcoming, safe, and supportive environment where all students feel valued, respected, and safe enough to embrace challenges and see mistakes as opportunities for learning. We've worked really hard as a staff and faculty to create an environment where everybody who comes into that building feels like they belong and that they're part of our family, which seems to help our students to be able to learn and thrive academically and socially. We did a parent survey, and some of the questions that we asked were like, the rigor and challenge of the curriculum is, do they feel like it's appropriate? Fifty-seven, almost fifty-eight percent of them agreed that it was, the rigor was appropriate, and twenty-six felt like they strongly agreed. My child receives instruction based upon his or her individual needs. Sixty-eight and a half percent agreed, and twenty-six percent strongly agreed, which is great because that's one of the things that we really want to make sure is that we're reaching all of the, all of our students where they're at and helping to bring them where they need to be to be successful. As far as the school culture went, the question was, I feel welcomed and encouraged. As far as the school culture went, the question was, I feel welcomed and encouraged to be a partner in my child's education. Fifty-two and a half percent agreed, and thirty-six point eight strongly agreed. This year, we worked really hard on getting parents into our building to volunteer in the classroom, to read to the students, to play games with the students, to work at lunch and recess so that they would feel like they belonged. We also started a weekly principal update newsletter so that they would know what's going on, and I have tried to make sure that we've kept the Facebook and social media pages updated so that they would know what was going on. Cold Spring promotes acceptance of all people and their abilities. Fifty-two point six percent agreed, thirty-six point eight percent strongly agreed. Obviously, the leadership. The principal does an effective job of communicating with us at home. Sixty-eight point four percent strongly agreed. I think that was something that was a little new for them is getting that newsletter consistently on Monday. If, they are looking for it. If it's not there, by the end of the day, they're looking for it. So that goes home every week with anything that's going on in the community. The increased presence of Cold Spring on Facebook and the principal's newsletter has given me a greater sense of school happenings. Fifty-two point six percent agreed. Then we had the Voice Your Opinion. What do you, what do you feel should be top priority at Cold Spring Elementary School during the next few years? Building updates, which will happen, obviously, with our new school when that happens. School safety, increased rigor of the curriculum, more focus on phonetic-based reading, and having a better plan for disruptive children that are in the classroom. If you could change one thing about Cold Spring, what would it be? Nothing so far. The playground, using the space better for service providers, pave the bottom driveway. I love CSES. I wouldn't change a thing. The car line, putting air conditioning in the building, which we're working on, and more recess and time and longer lunch. And that's actually kind of funny because we did that. Part of the third grade curriculum is that they have to write a persuasive essay to persuade you to do something, obviously, and their essay was to persuade me to make lunches shorter and recess longer, and that was something that I felt was pretty easy to do, and it kind of empowered them and helped them to feel like they had a voice and that they did have a voice in what happens in the building because it is their building. So we did. We took some time off of lunch and added it to recess, so recess is now twenty-five minutes, which has been really great for them. The goals for the next three years, obviously, improve the outcomes of all learners through an inclusive and equitable education, integrate social-emotional learning into the school culture, promote positive relationships and a sense of belonging while promoting diversity and inclusion, establish strong partnerships with parents and families, and collaborate with the community organizations to support students and families, and then create a welcoming and inclusive environment, fostering diverse perspectives, and ensuring equitable access to resources and opportunities. I am very fortunate. Our staff and families all believe that the learning environment determines the success and motivation of the students to achieve. Our students enter a building where they know they are safe, loved, and that they belong, so they are better able to access the curriculum and learn. Goal one, obviously, was to improve the outcomes. So as you can see, well, you really can't because it's small, but we are right behind the district when it comes to ELA on our MCAS scores, but we're ahead of the state on the ELA. And then for math, we are a little ahead of the district and the state, and then we're slightly behind both in science. So we are really working on bringing in our science coaches to work with them on doing the science notebooking, noticing and wonder, and science modeling to help bring up some of those scores, and that, I think that's been really enjoyable for the students. Goal two was to integrate SEL into the school culture and promote positive relationships and a sense of belonging. Now, this is a goal that's really, all of them are close to my heart, but because as a school adjustment counselor, obviously, social-emotional learning is really big for me, and I think it was really big for us as a council and as a community. So we're trying to really foster that positive and inclusive school culture, and one way that we do that, besides the whole-school monthly meetings, is every morning during our morning announcements, we do what we call the CS Morning Mantra. And if you are in our building during morning announcements, this is something that is very moving. Our guests that have come in here have spoken about it often because I will say to them, remember you are, and they say, strong. You are important. And you hear the voices in unison throughout the building at the top of their lungs, and they're very proud about it. In fact, I, we had an IEP meeting recently with a kindergarten family, and the mom said that her little kindergartner comes home and plays Miss Van Winkle, and he'll say, he says, you are, and then he gets upset with her because she doesn't know what she's supposed to say next. So we sent home a copy of the Morning Mantra for her to be able to follow along with her son. But it is really important, and they, for them, it's, I think, it might be the first time that they're hearing that they are strong and that they're brave and that they're important, and I ended every time with, Miss Van Winkle loves you and is very proud of you. Make this the best day ever. And I think every student needs to know that they're loved, and sometimes their parents are just really busy, and they might forget. But every day, Monday through Friday, they hear at least once that they are loved and that somebody is very proud of them. Goal three is strong partnerships with parents and families. This was really important to us, that we really wanted the parents to be involved in the building and to feel like they could come through and be comfortable. And for some of our families that are, have students that are in our MLL program, they don't feel comfortable all the time because they don't speak the language. And so we did get them to come in for lunch and recess to volunteer. We have them coming in. Some of them said, how am I going to read a book because I don't speak the language? And I said, come in and read a book that's in your language. That's only going to benefit our kids, and so we've done a lot of that. We've identified and engaged stakeholders such as the Council of Aging, Active Living, I called it aging the first time, Active Living, the American Legion, the Big Brother Big Sister, and the YMCA, which has provided so much guidance and support for our students that it's been amazing. We send out the weekly newsletters to keep the families informed and to celebrate all the wonderful things that are happening in our building right now because we have an amazing community at Cold Spring. Goal four, create a welcome and inclusive environment. I feel like I'm repeating myself a little bit. We wanted to celebrate all of the different traditions and the cultures so that the students in our buildings were hearing things about their culture, seeing people that look like them, and knowing that it was, we could celebrate it. So we had our cultural club, and all of the holidays that may not typically be celebrated were celebrated in our hallways. Our hallways all of a sudden became Hanukkah, and it became Christmas, and all of the different holidays that we had. So we really wanted to try to make sure that they understood, that we understood, the different perspectives and celebrate them. We also reviewed our CST, the Child Study Team process, and the RTI to guard against over-identification in special education. We wanted to make sure that the students were getting the support they needed, but they, it doesn't always require that they are on that special ed path. Sometimes we can give them the interventions to give them the boost that they need. And then finally, are some of our pictures that we celebrated. The South Shore Action for Hope elected Cold Spring Elementary School as the 2024 Gold School, stating that, quote, "We showed up stronger than ever this year, and the close-knit nature and sense of community at Cold Spring is clear and inspiring." And I think that's what we all strive for in the building, and obviously, we have fun as well as trying to make sure that they're getting the curriculum. We have one little student who was diagnosed with cancer in, at Christmas time, and just came back to the building a month and a half ago, so we had a big welcome-back party. We did our March Math Madness in the hallway, where we had all of the questions, and the kids got to answer and add to the pot of gold. And then, the next one, I think it's the last one. This year, we started the Cubs Cafe, which Dr. Rogers has taken part in. Our students get together and they serve coffee, sodas, and snacks to our teachers on Friday afternoon. The teachers go online and order on the order sheet, and they put it all together, and they deliver it to us on Friday with a smile on their face, and they do a lot of the please and thank you. So the manners are definitely there, and they're little professionals when they come around. On, in remembrance of nine eleven, we had our SRO Officer Pat and my cousin, so gracefully came through. He's a Boston EMS. He was part of the Boston Marathon tragedy, and he came in and read to our students, and the students had amazing questions for both Officer Pat and the school, and for my cousin Randy. Our hope is to involve more of the community service providers next year in remembrance of nine eleven. And then, obviously, that's when the Plymouth Fire Department came with Lieutenant Walsh, and they squirted. Though it was an amazing event, but we all got very wet, but it was, it was fun. And then, the last slide, the last picture is our Be Present Pizza Party with the principal. So we, the kids with the amazing attendance, it was two or less absences, got a pizza party. That was in February, and then we'll do it again in June in hopes of bringing our attendance up. There you go.
Awesome. Questions? Ms. Jackson?
I don't really have a question, but I just want to say that I really appreciate your focus specifically on the social-emotional learning piece and the inclusivity because I feel like that so strongly mirrors what we have in our strategic plan, and it really helps to give kids a really good foundation. So I think you're doing a really great job.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
I also just want to mention, I've had the privilege of spending quite a bit of time in Cold Spring this year with some of our special friends, and every time I go, everybody's in a costume, and I can't keep up with it. So I feel a little left out, but the sense of community that you've built there has just been amazing. And I will also say that the Morning Mantra, it's my favorite. When I get there in the morning, I stand in the hall, and I just hear all the little voices screaming, and it's amazing. And if you haven't been there on a Coffee Cart Friday, it is also amazing. So I don't know if you thought at the beginning of the year that you'd make it through your first year as a principal, but you've really done an amazing job, and we appreciate you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. I'm working really hard, and it means the world to me, so thank you.
Awesome. Ms. Aywood?
It's not a question. It's more so just a comment. I just want to thank you. Just in listening to this presentation, you really get at the core of who the students are and frankly, who the families are. And so, and so, yeah, we always do talk about rigor as it relates to schools, but in order to, to kind of sustain rigor, to support rigor, we need to support people who are, you know, at their core, and, and building them up in a way, whether it be through these mantras, whether it be through mentorships or other opportunities, even, even the bridge that you are creating with their families in terms of, you know, kind of maybe mitigating just some of their, you know, their fears, is what, is what creates a whole child. And so I just want to thank you. I know you were nervous, but you did. You did a great job. You did a great job in terms of presentation, and you appear to be doing a great job in your first year.
I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you so much.
All right. Ms. Bryant?
Hello.
Hi.
So I speak quite often of meeting people where they are, and I could feel that through the entirety of the presentation. I think back to my own experience and would say, you are creating the school that I needed as a child. You're seeing the child, you're seeing who they're connected to, you're seeing who they're not connected to by bringing in partners that can give them a different perspective, but again, at that core, knowing that everybody there is because they love them and support them. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Michelle?
Just a, just a couple comments. Again, not, not any questions, but I just, a few things I noticed about your presentation that I really liked is that when you were talking about your mantras, when you said that every child deserves to feel loved, you didn't, you didn't put any blame on anybody else for a child not feeling loved, and I think that that's really important to recognize, is that, you know, you, you, you give people grace, and, and I think that that's very important, and not pointing fingers or pointing blame, and just making sure that you are responsible for children feeling love in your building. And the other thing was the awesome attendance, and I really like that because I am, I'm probably in the minority, but I, I, I don't like attendance policies. I don't like perfect attendance awards, and I think by doing awesome attendance and allowing them one or two days or whatever, you're not striving for perfection, you're striving for awesome.
Right.
And I think that that's really important, and I think that's a really great way to frame the attendance piece, to be encouraging and not, you know, oh, I missed a day, and now it's not perfect, and now I can't get it. So I think that that's a really great way to frame the attendance piece and being present, is, it doesn't have to be perfect for you to be recognized for being good at it. So I think that that's really awesome. So thank you. I think you're doing a great job.
I feel like, I don't think there's such a thing as perfect, and I think when we try to have students fit into that box of perfection, we get our anxiety, we get our depression, we get the fact that they don't feel good enough about themselves. So thank you for recognizing that. Thank you.
Awesome. Well said, Michelle. Just, I, two, two comments and one question, one echo of everything I've, that my colleagues have said. So one, congratulations, a great test scores. Those are, you know, looking great, you know, at least at minimum on par with the, you know, state averages. Like, or Dr. Rogers loved the Morning Mantra, and I'm sure in return that you are loved as well. So that's awesome.
Thank you.
My only question, and the only reason I have insight on this is, you know, being on your school council. I know you made the transition from Ms. Morgan's Leader in Me program to being a trauma-sensitive school, which I think, you know, that's you understanding, you know, where your students are coming from. How's that transition been? Have you had any families that are like, hey, what happened to Leader in Me? I think you were trying to keep some of the elements of that, but how's that transition gone?
So we have kept some of the elements. We still do a lot of that goal-setting that came from Leader in Me, and parents, there were only a few that were, because I hear the word trauma, and they don't understand it, but once we were able to explain it to them that it's, every kid
It applies to everybody.
can benefit from the, the goals of a trauma-sensitive school. It ultimately just means that everybody's going to come in and they're going to feel safe. We are implementing a new program that's part of that, where there's a little envelope that says fragile on the outside, handle with love, and the teacher can put a name in there and hand it off to the next teacher and specialist so that they know, you know, he's, he's struggling a little bit today, handle him with a little extra love. So I think, I think they were concerned about that word, trauma, but I think when we explained it to them, that it's just another way to build them up, to protect them, help them to feel safe and secure in the building. Sometimes our world is scary in general, and the things that these kids are seeing on the internet and on TV, or even in their own home sometimes, it's, they need to know that they can come in this one place at least and feel safe and loved. And I get so many hugs a day. It's like, you can't not like your job even on a bad day because I've got kids walking into my office because I have an open-door policy, and they give me a nice big hug, and it's a great, it's a great thing for me. So I've, I've got amazing families, and we've got amazing kids, and we have the best staff in town. So I am very fortunate, very fortunate.
Awesome. The one, great, great answer. The one thing I forgot to mention earlier, thank you very much for doing the, that whole ICE and deportation presentation in Portuguese. I'm sure that made them feel even more welcome than they already are. So I think, thank you for doing that.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, and congratulations on a great first year.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Nathaniel Morton. We have Ms. Chrissy Chase and Taylor Sewell. Sewell?
Sewell.
Sewell.
I'll try to be just as good. Sometimes it's harder to go second.
Yeah, but you got, you got backup.
I got, I got backup, so we're good. No, but before I start, just recognition and thank you to Dr. Sorenson. So, thirty-five years is pretty impressive. And so, congratulations and thank you. And then, before I start, just to the committee and then to district administration, thank you. The first year has had some challenges, but I've never felt alone and I've, I've always felt supported. So, definitely to everybody here and really especially to Taylor because I think we've done a lot together and we're figuring it out kind of, kind of as we go, but it's great having, having a teammate that you can, we can count on. So, thank you. So, we'll get started with this plan. The first is really just, oh, I don't know if I can click and talk or, yep, okay, perfect. So, school council members, we have a pretty big council consisting of administration, parents, teachers, and Christina as the school committee liaison and parent, she plays a dual role. But just, you know, thanking everybody for their, for their work, being supportive and, and positive and helpful. The meetings are always really enjoyable for me and, and push me to be a little bit more reflective and responsive too. So, it's, it's a great group. We'll get into some of the demographics of Nathaniel Morton. We have five hundred and twelve students, K to five. Those are the student ratios, special education, English learners, economically disadvantaged, and we do have the two special programs of the Bridge Students and Title One. So, in addition to the English Language Learners, just to highlight that, we have the forty students, but we also have twelve FLEP students. So, those are students who had been EL students who have kind of met their marks and tested out, but are still within our school community. So, just a celebratory number and there's a slide coming up about that moving forward as well. Vision and core values really hasn't changed over the years, so we still have CREW as our kind of overarching PBIS program. And so, we tied our core values into CREW where we build competent students, resilient children, engaged learners, and welcomed individuals. We don't quite have the enthusiastic mantra of Cold Spring. I might need to, to copy some of that, but we do say our CREW pledge every morning. So, the CREW pledge is that I collaborate and cooperate with others, I respect myself, others, and spaces in our school, I put forth engaged effort in everything I do and I welcome others with an open heart. So, we really try to tie everything back into CREW and into those four areas that we really strive for our students to maintain and staff. Exciting, new and upcoming. We have put in a lot of time, effort, money, and energy into the appearance of Nathaniel Morton. It is looking nice. So, a couple of years ago, we had the roof project and so, since everything's kind of sealed in, we can start with the painting and the, and the plastering. And it's, it's been amazing to see the transformation. We got a new cafeteria floor, a new gym floor. It was the original wood in that gym floor, which is pretty incredible. We now have some, we've used some of that wood to build the frames of bulletin boards in our hallway. So, there's still a little bit of nostalgia in there. Coming up, we're going to continue with the ceilings and walls. We're going to add to some new lighting, looking at the stairwells, improving the stairwells. Cooling stations is huge. We do have the air conditioning units that have been installed in our cafeteria and we have some big AC units that are coming for our gym and our library spaces and then some other spaces around the school. And then, we are getting an upgrade of some security cameras around both the inside and outside of our building. So, I think, I can't get through this slide without a shout out to Mr. Bruzy, Robbie, our custodian. He's been involved in every single one of these projects, as has been our, you know, the maintenance department as well. And Matt has been over in our building a ton, but, you know, Robbie gets all the guys to work around the schedules of the contractors, really works with the contractors, inspects their work, and, and, and he's, he's amazing. So, just didn't want to get through that slide without a shout out to Robbie. Now, we'll get into some of the goal areas, first being academics. So, really looking at analyzing the student data to implement the, the targeted instructional interventions, holding the students accountable, holding the teachers accountable, making sure that we're responsive and looking for growth. So, how are we going to do all of this? We're going to work with a school-wide data team. So, we've been, this is something that we've really tried to focus on this year. We have a school-wide data team. It's myself and Taylor, Jen, Mark Ziani, our math coach, our CTLs. And we look at the data, we look at the responses, we look at the interventions, and we really look at students. And then, we do meet with grade levels on, on the students as well. So, really looking to build that method of, of interventions that are happening at the classroom level and then beyond. Focusing on some more inclusive practices, so it's not as much pullout, more service in the, in the classroom, monitoring for student engagement and accountability and all sorts, all sorts of practices that we're looking at to improve. But I, I will say, we're, we're at a really good starting point. We're not starting from scratch by any stretch. I think we're in a really good place. It's just that we can fine tune it and, and really keep the, keep the drive and the focus moving forward. Next is going to be our MCAS scores from last year, which we were in most categories a little bit below both state and, and district, except for our fifth grade. So, you know, I think that these were some numbers that when we initially looked at in the fall, we were like, all right, we, we got to rein it in a little bit. We've got to look at what we have in front of us and make sure what we're doing is the right match for some of our kiddos and we're in the right service plan and delivery. And so, you know, it wasn't like doom and gloom, but it was a little bit like, okay, we've got some work to do here, guys. And I think everybody really owned that and looking forward. You can see how we're using, like, the MCAS is one, you know, assessment measure, but what we have are, are STAR data and that's the district assessments that we give throughout the year. So, if you want to go to the next slide with the STAR progress. So, this is really looking at the percentage of students that were requiring interventions that as measured in the fall is like the aqua and then the darker blue is the winter. So, in almost all categories, we definitely decrease the number of kiddos needing like intervention. And the some that are kind of flat, we didn't parse it out for this because there's two categories. It's urgent intervention and intervention needed. So, where it says like, it's kind of flat, it's, we did still see a little bit of movement from like the urgent intervention on. So, this is the data that we've been looking at across the, the grades to really focus on response to the intervention, like, is the intervention matching and then are we seeing growth? So, tracking this and then tracking growth, which is in the next slide, highlighting the average growth scores from our fall to winter. So, this is the slide that I think from that like worry of MCAS gives us a little bit of like, okay, we are, we are teaching, we are reaching, and we are, we are celebrating some good growth. So, we set the goal of a forty to sixty percent growth for each assessment period. And for teachers, it's at the student level. For us, it's at the grade level, but we're seeing really great growth. And again, our fifth grade, our fifth grade teachers are just kind of knocking it, knocking out of the park here. And I don't know what their magic sauce is other than third floor and rooms with a view.
We're going to figure out the sauce, though.
When, when you ask, when I've asked them, I will say, they've said, we just have a great group of kids. But it doesn't just happen that way, but they're, they're not going to give themselves a ton of credit, but not, not to be shy of the other growth scores that are all well into the forty to sixty percent range. So, I think, you know, this just shows our teachers really are working and our students really are working and they, and they are growing. So, you know, definitely want to highlight and, and celebrate, celebrate the growth. We have a sneak peek into some of the winter to spring data and it's, and it's looking pretty good too. So, I was happy to, happy to see that. The next slide, I will say, is a, is a great slide to celebrate some great accomplishments. So, before going through these numbers, just a little anecdote of a change that we've had to our EL service delivery. So, we were lucky enough to hire a part-time English language para this year who is bilingual. So, it's the first time that we've had a bilingual staff member at our school. And just, just a story, like, within her first week, the teacher came, the fourth grade teacher came down to me and she's like, what a gift it is. I was like, oh, I know. And she's like, no, this is what just happened. It was a field trip and the permission slip didn't come back for a new, one of our newcomers. And, you know, we would just usually resend it, make sure it's translated and resend it, right? But Juliana sat with the student to figure out like what's going on and got to the bottom of it that she's a newcomer, she walks, she lives right up the street, walks to school every day and was just afraid of the school bus. But there's no part, nowhere to put that on the form. And when language is a barrier, there's nowhere to communicate that. So, it really hit me like, okay, we've been translating for our families, but we haven't really been communicating with our families or we've been communicating to, but not with. So, that was just like a little tidbit of like, we've, we can do better and now we will. Like, now that, with that mindset and that approach. So, she ended up coming in early that day and went on the field trip and rode the school bus and the girl had the time of her life at the planetarium. So, like, it was just an amazing like little piece of like, what a gift it is to just have somebody be able to converse with kiddos in their home language, especially about something that they're nervous about, you know? And how we can get caught up in our ways of like, well, we translated it, you know? But it doesn't get to the root of the open conversation. So, to celebrate these numbers though, so we have one and a half EL teachers at, at Nathaniel Morton. So, we share one teacher between us and Cold Spring. And we, this year, tested, so twenty-six students, well, we tested thirty-eight, but twenty-six were the ones who had goals. So, you can't meet your benchmark or exceed your benchmark or be tested out until you have a benchmark goal. So, tested thirty-eight students, twenty-six had goals from last year or years prior. So, of those twenty-six, nine met their benchmark and eight tested out. Like, so they, they met the language proficiency. So, we're at a sixty-five percent rate of students who are meeting or exceeding the benchmark. Last year, it was fifty-one percent meeting or exceeding. So, I think we're doing a great job in that, in that way. And like I mentioned in the previous slide, we have twelve students who are currently at Nathaniel Morton, but have tested out of the EL population and program. So, it's, it's a great model and it's great to see the kiddos, you know, learn, learn the, you know, learn English and be able to communicate really, really well. And it's, it's exciting to, to see that. For the next goal area, which is the social emotional learning, I'm going to turn it over to Taylor.
All right. So, some of the things I wanted to highlight tonight for our social emotional learning, you'll see up there, it says improvement in student behavior and decrease in office referrals. A big piece of that is going to be going into our community meetings and I want to talk about that on the next slide, so I'll dive a little deeper. So, as I go through our SEL things that we have going on, we have been holding bus expectation and safety assemblies with our school resource officer, Vinnie Roth. And so, we've done a lot on bus safety this year, starting with kindergarten. At the beginning of the year, they get to ride the bus with their families at our kindergarten orientation, get a feel for it, but also just teaching them from that young age what's expected. And then, the follow-up with the school resource officer has been great. Parents are super helpful with that too. We're in constant communication about that, just making sure our kids are getting to and from school safely. Another thing that we do, admin, Chrissy and I, are school psychologists and our adjustment counselor and the school nurse meet every Tuesday. We sit together, we call them our SEL meetings, but it's really to talk about kind of like the heartbeat of the school and what's going on, what's going on with our kids, who's seeking a little extra help, where are we at with certain cases and things going on in kids' homes, what are some resources we can pull together for these kids? It's been a great add to have our school nurse this year as she's new and so, it helps her to kind of get to know the kids on another level as well. They're not just coming in and out of our office, but we're looping her into the bigger picture. It keeps us all on the same page and I feel like, for me, being new at the school, this has really been the most important meeting every week is kind of looking at our kids and what they need more than their academics, right? Just like, what's going to help them get through their day to day? We also meet with the nurse to address chronically absent students and getting to the root of what is causing that chronic absence, working with families to get kids to school and kind of seeing how we, as you said before, like, Chrissy, taking away those barriers and talking to parents about like, what can help you get your kid to school? Because that's, it's so important to start those good habits now at this young age so that they carry through, through their schooling in Plymouth. Our school counselor does an amazing job with running lunch bunches. Our school psychologists do them as well. This gives students opportunities to foster friendships and work on social emotional pieces as well as, you know, have time to practice some of the things that they learn through our school counselor on how to be a good friend and how to reciprocate a conversation and all of those little nuanced things that are sometimes hard for kids. They work with them during lunch in a small group. It's a quiet setting, it's a safe place, and we've seen a huge improvement due to that time spent. Another thing that we are working on is creating our student ambassador program for fifth graders. We'd like to use these fifth graders to welcome new families, give tours of the school. It gives them that little bit of a leadership opportunity, which is so important as they are kind of the, the big dogs, if you will, of the elementary school. But it's time for them to kind of take that and assume that role as, you know, confident leaders in their building. And so, that's something next year, we really want to push and continue more in giving those kids opportunities. I was just saying, I loved the coffee cart idea and like, our fifth graders could do that. I could use a coffee in the afternoon. But I, I think those, those little opportunities really do build so much in a kid for their future. If you give them responsibility, they start to see themselves as a responsible person, as a leader, as somebody who can do things. Like I said, I wanted to go a little bit more into our community meetings that we started this year. And so, kind of our CREW meetings that it's all going to tie back into that CREW quote that Chrissy had said at the beginning. We started these in, I think it was March this year, but looking at what our kids needed at the time, we had come back from February break and, you know, after a break, we get like an uptick in behaviors and we were kind of thinking like, well, it would be great to roll back out those expectations we set in September. We all need a refresher sometimes. And so, while Chrissy was able to run grade level data meetings and start looking at kids and how we're working on those interventions, I actually was able to take some of our paraprofessionals and our school counselor. We met with each grade level, so we took all the kids, Chrissy took all the teachers.
Teachers didn't have to write subplans.
And so, the first round of them, I just went over our CREW expectations and what those look like in our school building at each grade level. And this was great because I could kind of play like, I'm new here, can you guys teach me? You know these, you've been knowing these all along. And, you know, it's easy to say like, be respectful, but what does that look like at Nathaniel Morton? And so, we talked a lot about that. We kind of built the rules out together and that's something that and that's something that I will definitely continue next year. After looking at that, and attending grade-level meetings, and really sitting down with our school counselor, Hannah Hoster, we decided to kind of create a more responsive approach to these community meetings, and it worked really well, so it's something we're going to continue next year, hopefully monthly. But you can see some of the topics that we did in grades one and two, size of the problem and how we respond. So looking at, like, this is a problem you're going to face, how would you react? And because sometimes, you know, your pencil falls on the floor, and you have, like, a big reaction, well, let's help you match your reaction to the problem. And there was a game to be played, there was a lot of scenarios to work through, the kids were having a lot of fun with it. And so we also created a resource for teachers to take back to the classroom to then practice those skills with their class at morning meeting. With third grade, we noticed that they really were having trouble with perspective-taking, with friendships, a lot of things coming in from recess, a lot of things, you know, off the bus. And so we worked with them on taking different perspectives, like, this is the scenario, how would one person interpret it, how would another interpret it, how can they find common ground? And finally, with fourth and fifth grade, we did positively solving peer conflicts. So many of our kids in fourth and fifth grade were struggling with how to, like, positively end a friendship, or to ask somebody to give you space. Maybe just, you know, you don't have to be friends with somebody, but you have to be kind. And so that was kind of a big topic. And so this is something we're going to continue into next year, is really looking at, what do our students need? And how can we address it there? What resources can we give teachers? And then what resources can we give parents? Because after each one of these meetings, we'll be sending home a newsletter to parents with some resources to tie in at home, if you want to talk about it at home, if you want to have your kiddo teach you what they learned today. And just really that carryover to create that homeschool connection as well. Think that's it?
Got it. And that leads us into homeschool connection, talking about community and family engagement. So this is the last of our goal areas. And the goal being that if we can engage in consistent, transparent, culturally responsive communication with our families and our community, then we will foster an inclusive, trusting, and supportive school community. So I think this is something that just, like, at, at the heart of our crew, this is, this is what drives us. This is what drives our school community, to be a place where all kids feel welcomed, all staff feel welcomed, all families feel welcomed. And to continue increasing the communication, to continue building upon that, and, and to continue welcoming people into our, into our community. So, you know, we have great partnerships with our school council, with our PTA, with, you know, organizations around, that we're, that we're trying to, you know, partner with. We partner with High Point for, in school counseling, and just trying to build upon more supports for, for families, I think is, is important. But, you know, our PTA is, is incredible, and the way that they run different events to feel, like, it's not just fundraising events, they're like family fun, community, community-building events. So they've done a really nice job, and continue to do an amazing job with all of that. One thing that we started this year is the coffee with the principal, so that's on the next slide. And it's just, what happened, so we were talking in the school council about, like, a topic, you know, a hot topic. And so one of the topics became, like, you know, anxiety, and then talking about, like, also social media. And then we kind of merged them both with talk of the book, The Anxious Generation, and talking about how, you know, kids right now are, they're, they have, like, a phone-based childhood versus, like, a play-based childhood from a generation ago, right? So it's like, the phone-based childhood, kids are sedentary, they are isolated. A play-based childhood, they were active and social. So we're seeing those results, we're seeing, like, the results of the kids who aren't, you know, interacting and all those sorts of things. So the coffee with the principal topic was, was started through our school council, and we were able to highlight the, the social media smarts, the things that we've done. What do we do, how do we, how do we talk to the, to the classes in LIT's class, like, the library information technology, in health class with our resource officer? What are the conversations that we have about social media safety? And then highlighted, highlighted a little bit about the book, The Anxious Generation, with some talking points and discussion topics. And then we were, I was sharing about that at school council, and one of the members was, like, looking. She's like, oh, my gosh, you're thinking about March? Well, March seventh happens to be the national day to unplug. So we built this kind of trajectory, where it was the coffee with the principal on the seventh, and then a school-wide challenge to unplug on the Friday the seventh. And then we decided to go enroll with that for all Fridays in March, so calling them screen-free Fridays. So gave the families lists of ideas and activities to do that are, that do not involve screens. And I, we never really checked in to see who participated or how it worked, but it was just kind of a set challenge. But I think the more that we can do this kind of stuff, where we're saying, like, you know, simple things, like, play a board game, you know, or visit a local park or playground, go for a bike or scooter ride, like, those kinds of ideas, and just being able to unplug. You know, I always say, like, the, the, in my home, like, my, if I'm on my phone, my dog has no problem coming and, like, swatting my phone out of my hands. My kids know better, they wouldn't do it, but like, the dog does, and it's like, but my kids probably want to. Like, you know, and it's, how much, how much are we separating out from the people that we're just with? So that was kind of one of the messages that we were talking about in one of the challenges. So that's something that I think we're going to continue with, and maybe try to expand on that as we come, just to be able to, to connect. And then the last slide just highlights, this was probably one of the easiest of all the slides to put in there, because I, I could have kept going. Like, this is, these are just some of the clubs, activities that are run mostly by our teachers and staff, and mostly after school. I would want to highlight the kindness club, that's something that started this year. Our nurse, Antonia, started that, and just an incredible, you know, the, we can't have enough kindness in the world right about now. And she just took that on and let, like, younger kids join, and it's just, it's been a great experience for the kids. They, they decorated the teacher's room, they put notes, all posted notes about, like, you are loved, you are the best teacher, like, just little things like that. They really boosted up our, our, you know, kindness and the feeling all around the school. But they also took on the Ashes to Action fundraiser. So that was, we partnered with a school in Altadena, California, so it was the Odyssey Charter School. And they were completely destroyed with the California wildfires. And we partnered with them, the kindness club advertised it, tons of teachers came together, we had a raffle, we had a yard sale, and we raised almost five thousand dollars for the school, which we know isn't, you know, to rebuild a school is going to be a lot more than five thousand dollars. But we also did a video message where our students, just, we had a video camera up at the yard sale, and the kids just, like, spoke in these messages of hope. And the principal of that school, I sent it to her, and she's like, you have no idea the timing. Like, we have three weeks before spring break, and our, like, we're shot, like, we're done. And this is the most uplifting, like, message that I can share out. So, yes, the money helps, and we came together as a community, but the message of hope, and the message of we care, and the message of, like, we're kind of all in this together, like, I just think, like, the little bits that you can do to help the greater community, you can't hear that enough and practice that enough. And that was just a real big highlight, I think, from students and staff this year. All the other pieces, the PTA events, the Fall Festival, Winter Wonderland, Book Fair, Family Night. Art show is going to be on Wednesday night, if you're really wanting to dive into the outdoors on the inside. Just incredible artwork is going to be on display, but, you know, it's not done just by our teachers. We really have great parent involvement, that they come in and, and help, help, help. So it's really great. And just to, so we, we raised that money for the Ashes to Action, but we also just had a Ninja Fun Run right before April vacation, and we raised almost seventeen thousand dollars for playground upgrades. So lots of great involvement, and, and lots of great things that are highlighted. We have that little crew journey video, if you want to click on that, Kristen. So it's just a slideshow of certain things, some things that have happened throughout the year, if we're allowed to see it. I don't know, I put it in the slideshow, but I do not do it separately. Oh, sorry. Okay, well, so there's a video attached, that maybe if you send it, you can see it. It just highlights the pictures of all of those, of those things, and just, and highlights the smiles of the, of the kiddos, and the joy, I think, that's in our school. So that's that.
All right, Dr. Sorensen.
Well, my first comment is for both Cold Spring and Nathaniel Morton. It's really crystal clear that you all care for kids. It's crystal clear, you know, you go the extra mile, to use that expression, and I think that's what our children need today. So that's wonderful, that's wonderful. And your Tuesday morning meetings, those are wonderful, because I think, I think a child who has a need becomes the topic for four or five adults. What can we do for this him or her to get them through? That's amazing, and, you know, and if the parents ever knew that we, their child was getting that much attention, that's pretty amazing. So I really like that. I, I want your, your slide about screens, getting off the screens. There's a study coming out of the UK that I think is rather fascinating, of MRIs. So here's a very well-funded study of MRIs of a thousand students, and they factored in time on screen to images of the, in the, in the brain. And they saw, and the number was thirty. When they went over thirty hours in a week, they could actually see changes in the brain structure, which doesn't, which doesn't surprise any of us. But it's the first study, really, to show that, so that movement away from screens is, is fairly fantastic.
Thank you, yeah, I think it'll, it's hard.
It is hard.
But, but I think it'll be good.
I cut you off. All right, Ms. Bryant.
So I'd like to say, when you talk about trying to find that secret sauce, I think for myself, what's been consistent has been your leadership. So transitioning from vice principal to principal, one would be worried about what's the dynamic of the school, and how would it change? And I can say for myself, as a parent, there wasn't anything but a sense of relief from the day my child started at the school. She was seen, she was welcome, she started there post-COVID, so she didn't know anything about being in the classroom. As the youngest of five, I was completely worried about how do I keep her engaged and focused? And you offer so many opportunities, that I'm literally, like, there's not enough days in time in the week to do anything else. But her eagerness to tell me about her day, it's just such a very different experience. And so I know that by you pouring into your students and your staff, that you help contribute to that recipe, so I would be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to say that. I'm heartbroken that she's a fifth grader, but we're going to be okay.
Ready.
But, thank you.
She's ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Jackson.
A couple of things stood out to me about your presentation that I loved. The first one was the communicating with. I think that was a really strong, important message, that often we send out a lot of things in a lot of different languages, and we think how, about how we are trying to be inclusive. But the communicating to and the communicating with is a really strong message that we should all take with us whenever, you know...
That's why I shared, that, that hit me hard this year.
Yeah, that was real, that really resonated. Yeah. Also, your numbers, I mean, that was a really big jump, and, you know, I think you should be proud of yourself for the job that you did with that. And the inclusivity that Taylor talked about with getting the kids involved creates a stronger sense of belonging in addition, and I think that's also something to be really proud of. So I think it's a really great job.
Anybody else? Michelle?
Just, if you do start the mantra thing, I'm, I'm going to be the parent that needs you to send the sheet home, because I'll get yelled at.
You will be.
If I don't echo what's happening.
If you don't get it right.
All right, well, thank you very much, and congratulations, both of you, on a great first year.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Superintendent's report, Dr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mr. Bizzano. Short update, first Saturday, we had beautiful weather for our Fourth Annual Health and Safety Fair. It was truly just a remarkable day. We started actually with the Walk for Hope with the Yellow Tulip Project over at the Center for Active Living, followed by the fair, which went from ten to one, great turnout. Just really, just, we had forty local organizations, nonprofits, you know, that were part of that. In addition to the early childhood portion of the fair, the touch-a-truck, we had a number of comfort dogs there to greet the families and to ride the bus, school bus, with the children, which was a big, which was a big hit. So it was, it was a great day, the weather was a little iffy at the beginning of the week, but it was spectacular. I mean, we couldn't have asked for better weather, so really just a great thanks to just all the volunteers, the staff, all the, just our partners here in the community for putting on, again, a wonderful event. As was mentioned by a couple of our principals tonight, we do have the cooling stations. So we've, this has been something that we've been working on for many years, as, as you know, and this has come up through our teacher advisory, and, and a lot of the work that we did through negotiations. So we are adding cooling stations at Nathaniel Morton, Cold Spring, Hedge, and Manomet is also getting some additional air conditioning units for areas that aren't equipped. So again, this is really providing those non-HVAC schools with some cooling and demonification to help with that. So we're hopeful that that will help when the weather gets warmer later, later in, you know, May and June, and, and when we come back. So I'm happy that we were able to, to, to do that. I just want to recognize that today is the Start of Teacher Appreciation Week. So just a, a big thank you to all of our teachers, our paraeducators, our specialists, everyone who is working to have an impact on our, on our kids. We're truly blessed here, having, you know, worked here for so many years, but having my children go through here. It's, it's a, really, it's truly an amazing district, and it starts, you know, with the people in those buildings each and every day. So just thank you to all of our teachers for everything that they do. And then just a shout-out, because we won't have a meeting until after this happens, but Wednesday is National School Nurses Day, so it's really important to recognize our nurses and our school health aides, coming from a family of nurses. I, I think, I, I think every neighbor in my, like, I can't, and so many nurses growing up, but I have a lot of family members that are in the health profession, and nurses, and, and see what they do. But to know what our school nurses do each and every day, too, is really remarkable. It's a very, very much appreciated role that they play, so thank you to them. And just a quick update, our high school students weren't here today, but we do have two things. We have our senior showcase for our CCTE programs this week. So May seventh, Wednesday, is North High School at six PM. So if you stop by North, have any availability at six o'clock, that's an opportunity for the students that are in our vocational program to showcase what they've been doing all these four years, particularly their senior year. So that, again, May seventh is North, and South is May eighth, so a great opportunity to, again, to showcase our kids. And I'm going to turn it over to Adam in a second to provide an update on federal funding, the information that we're receiving, but before I do, because this will be the last time that I'll be able to formally address Dr. Sorensen here. I know that we've done that, but again, Jim, I just want to thank you for a remarkable thirty-five years of support for this community, and, and at least, you know, over twelve years for me personally. And I just, you know, two things that stand out to me about you is your advocacy for all kids, and your love for family, which I think you're, you know, the two of them complement each other, and, and you bring that, you've brought that to the work that you've done for many, many years. So I just want to thank you for your leadership and your support.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it over to Adam, just to say a few words about the federal funds.
I echo Dr. Campbell's, and I, I know you from back on the soccer field.
Years and years ago.
I used to coach him, by the way.
Years ago. We won't go there. So I just wanted to update you, just in regards to some federal funding. So I just wanted to update you just in regards to some federal funding updates that we've just recently received. I had a webinar on Friday with ASBO, which is the Association of School Business Officials International. So the major key points for next year at this point in time is that Title I, Title IV IDA would be level funded. Title II and McKinney-Vento funding could see some major changes. I didn't get into specifics as to what those are. Title III was not discussed the other day. They said that school meal program changes are not being considered at the House of Representatives level, which basically would pull it off the table of any changes to that. Medicare cuts are still on the table. And E-rate is right now is being constitutionally challenged at the Supreme Court level. We receive a lot of cable funding and a lot of projects that we do to upgrade, like our servers and so forth, come from E-rate. So that could have, and that, we usually can get a couple hundred thousand dollars from E-rate every year. So those, there's some unknowns. In that morning, the President's skinny budget for FY26 came out. So they hadn't had time to, to review that. But after reviewing it, I think it was MASC or MSS, I can't remember which one, came out with a summary of some things. Most of that would affect us in FY27, so not necessarily next school year, but the school year after. But some of the items that came up was, and again, none of this is, is solid at this point in time. But US Department of Education is slated for about a $12 billion cut. It basically doesn't, it talks about consolidating some of the grants. Some of the areas, nothing was specified in regards to what. But it does, they, they're kind of surmising that it does include some Title II and Title IV cuts. The proposal does indicate Title I funding would remain intact. It also talks about preserving IDA grants, but consolidating them and funding at level funds as well. They do talk a little bit about eliminating programs such as Title III and teacher quality partnerships. And we do get Title III funds. And they also talked a little bit about increasing the money going to charter schools and increasing those local options. Again, nothing's finalized at this point in time, but those are just come with some of the key highlights at, at this moment. And so we're hopeful for next year and we'll see how that goes.
I appreciate that update, obviously worries some times, but we'll take it one step at a time. All right, anything else, Dr. Campbell?
Yep, that's all.
All right, any questions for Dr. Campbell or Dr. Bizzano? All right, next up, retirements, Dr. or Mr. Choffey.
Yes, good evening. I can share with you that David Crawford, our custodian on the second shift at West Elementary School, will be retiring at the end of June, on June 30th, after 27 years of service. And then, of course, I can officially announce, after 35 years, Dr. Sorenson, for all schools, students, families and staff and his support effective Wednesday?
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning, on May 7th, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
I have some adding to do.
I know, I had to do the math. We would like to thank David Crawford for his 27 years of service and wish him the best of luck. And we would also like to thank Dr. Sorenson for his 35 years of service and wish him the best of luck. I know it's been my pleasure and my honor to serve alongside him. And he will be greatly missed with big shoes to fill, so.
Thank you very much, everybody, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sorenson. All right, next up, we have, any reports or proposals from committee members? All right, anything from Master Planning Committee, Mr. Morgan?
No updates, we, we just met last week, so.
Yep, I know, Building Committee doesn't meet until later this week. So back to you, Mr. Choffey, for appointments, these requests and resignations.
Just briefly, we had one appointment to share with you and then we did accept three resignations.
All right, on to unfinished new business. Do you have any unfinished business anyone wants to bring up? Any new business? Nope, all right, we're moving swiftly along. We got the, next up, the consented agenda. We just have some homeschooling plan approvals and some accounts payable warrants. So I don't think there's anything controversial there, anything anybody wants to pull? All right, I think we're good to vote then, Dr. Campbell? All right, so we need a motion. Ms. Aywood?
I move that the Plenary School Committee approve the consent agenda as presented, the five, um, May 5th.
Ms. Bryant, seconds. All right, that brings us to the end of our agenda. That we will adjourn and Dr. Sorenson, if you'll do the honors.
I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Dr. Maestis reminded me about an hour or two ago that I've served, I've sat at over 1,500 school committee meetings. So I adjourned my last one. Thank you, everybody.